If I could get everyone's attention, we have some presentations of our 4H Shooting Sports Teams have excelled beyond my expectations and we have, some of the teams have won national recognition. And I'm gonna let Hank Shirley take over from here and we're gonna recognize all these fine young 4Hers.
Thank you Chairman. Well, good evening. My name's Hank Shirley. My wife and I have the pleasure of coaching the Walton County 4H 22 and Air Rifle Teams. First off, I want to give thanks to God for his protection and blessings that he gave us this year. We did a lot of traveling and God always got us home safe and kept us, kept us healthy. And that's, that's a good thing in a long season like that. I also want to thank the board for taking the time to recognize us. I know you guys got a busy schedule. We can appreciate the support that you continue to give to 4H. These programs aren't just about marksmanship. These kids learn a lot of skills, life skills, that go on with them past after they get done with the shooting range. They learn patience and discipline, responsibility, teamwork, a lot of good life skills. Your support makes that possible and we really do appreciate that. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the Air Rifle and 22 teams up and introduce the kids and then we'll go on and talk about what accomplishments they had this year. Alright, the, these are all 4H kids, but I've got them grouped by the matches and the programs they participated in. So, the American Legion Junior Shooting Sports Team was Finn Griner. Finn? Don't be shy. Skyler Everett. Skyler Everett. Willow Combs. I don't think Willow's here tonight. And Bethany Shirley. Alright, the Civilian Marksmanship Program Team was Skyler Everett, Willow Combs, Bethany Shirley, and Morgan Abercrombie. The 4H 22 and Sporter Rifle and Silhouette Team was Willow Combs, Bethany Shirley, Will Greathouse, Wyatt Spa, and Clay Jennings. And the 4H State Air Rifle Team, oh, I've already mentioned them. Alright, we're gonna go on with the recognition for the awards. For the 4H State, the Air Rifle Team finished first. They brought home the gold medal and the state championship, so that's a big accomplishment. Morgan Abercrombie got third place as an individual. Bethany Shirley got first place as the gold medalist and the state champion for the second consecutive year. Bethany advanced to the 4H National Shooting Sports Championship where she finished first in the three-position match, tied for fourth in the forty-shot standing match, tied for first in air rifle silhouettes, won the silver medal by tiebreaker, and was crowned the 4H Air Rifle Individual National Champion. The Civilian Marksmanship Team, the team finished first place, winning the CMP State Gold Medal, earning their second state championship last year. That's an outstanding achievement and highlights the team's consistent performance. Bethany Shirley was the individual gold medalist, making her the state champion for the third time and for the second consecutive year. Bethany went on to win the CMP Southeastern Regional Championship for the third consecutive year, advancing to the national championship where she finished first, receiving the gold medal, a $1,000 scholarship, as this year's CMP National Champion. That was her second national championship of the year. The American Legion Team, this year we had the extreme pleasure of representing Post, American Legion Post 64 and the American Legion Annual Three-Position Junior Air Rifle National Championship. In the first round, that's the state championship, the team finished third with Bethany finishing first as the state individual champion. In the second round, Bethany, Bethany's first place finish qualified her to advance to the American Legion, American Legion National Championship at Hillsdale College in Michigan where she shot shoulder to shoulder with the top fifteen Sporter shooters in the nation. After three days of competition with four individual matches and a ten-shot final, Bethany led all competitors to win the gold medal, a $5,000 scholarship, and a Crossman Sporter Competition Air Rifle as the 2025 American Legion National Championship Champion, her third championship of last year. This group of young athletes has demonstrated an elite level of discipline and a commitment to excellence. Their hard work and passion and sportsmanship have shone through the entire year. They truly represented Walton County with pride. Congratulations to all team members. Your dedication continues to shine at the state and national levels. You guys want to stand up and take a picture?
Good job.
Good job.
Good evening Board. Thank you for welcoming the Walton County 4H Shotgun Programs tonight. We all may shoot different styles of targets, but this year it's been one for the books for the safe program for Walton County for sure. I'm Jesse Weaver, one of the shotgun coaches, and we're here tonight to recognize the amazing accomplishments of our team this past season. This would have been, this would not have been possible with all the afternoon, evenings, weekends, hours and hours and hours put in by volunteer coaches and all the parents that support these athletes. I would try to get all the athletes to go ahead and come on down quickly so they can get on with their meeting. While they're walking down, I'll go ahead and get going. This season was without many trials. Our team was significantly opposed at the beginning for the first time ever. This fueled this group of kids. They wanted to push and, and push and prove all the opponents wrong that they could do what they could do. That being said, they podiumed everywhere they went. Every, every event we went to, we put somebody on the podium, so I won't get into all that. We'll be here well into the evening with that. We did start out with our Invitational, the first shoot of the year in February. Jack Sikowski had won it. And then rolling into April, we did our, we hosted our third Modified District Event. We had eight counties from across the state and over a hundred kids show up to the Criswell Shooting Complex where we wound up took first in seniors, first in juniors, first team in juniors, first team in seniors, and several other podium spots as well there. We went on to state down at Rocky Eagle, which for Modified State, it was a very, very, very rainy day. We wound up team-wise coming in third place. We missed first place by one target, went to a shoot-off, and we wound up in third. Then we moved on to our competition season, which is skeet trap and sporting clays. Marlow Farms has graciously opened up their field for us to come shoot as much as we would like. We went down to Savannah Memorial Day Weekend. It's a very long weekend. We wound up took first through third in our juniors division. Took first place junior team. We also took first place and second place HOA in our senior division, and the team won first place in Savannah. That team, those four boys of Jack Sikowski, Josh Gookin, Aiden Price, and Dakota Stevens, all got to represent the state of Georgia. In Nebraska, the week, the last week of June, out there, they came, they shot really well. Weather was a lot different out there than it is here. They came in second place Sporting Clays team only behind Texas, sixth place in trap as a, as a team, sixth place individual in trap, sixth place in Sporting Clays as well, fourth place high overall individual, second place high overall as a team. And that being said, as a team, Georgia's one of the only states in the country that still have a group from the same county. Most folks cherry pick all their four shooters, so we represented Georgia very, very well. That's all I've got. I did my short and sweet.
Go slide together.
He rose.
There you go. Good job.
Yeah, just one more thing that I've got. And with Jesse up here, when, when you win the state in Georgia and you go out to nationals, you're not representing just your county, you're representing the entire state. So, it was a really unique experience for me. I had coaches from all over the state calling me, asking me if I needed anything, what they could do to help, because they really want us to go out there and win, because we're, we're playing for Georgia at that point. On the picture here, you see, when a team medals or gets a podium, all the, all the teams go up there and they hold up the flag for their state, and it's really a badge of honor that Walton County did that good. And then the two archery teams from the state also got first and second. One of them got recurve, one of them got compound. I can't remember which was which, but we brought the flag back. And this is the flag that the kids from Georgia held up at the, at the competition, and Jesse and I thought it would be appropriate to give this to the Board of Commissioners so y'all could have it as a souvenir or whatever. Yeah, it's got, it's got the, the date of the thing on the back. And anyway, we just wanted y'all, y'all board to have that. Thank you.
Thank you all.
There's the whole, there's the whole state of Georgia contingency, and then this is all Walton County right here.
Good evening everybody and good evening Board. Thank you again for having us here tonight. We appreciate it. And also I'd like to reiterate, thank you for the nice facility you gave us to, to practice in. It's nice to have a, a big spot like that, and we were able to this year to actually double the size of our team because we had more space. And every, every coach that came in just ooh-dah-nod over our space and wanted to know about it, wanted to know the dimensions of it. So, again, thank you for all that you do and provide for us to, you know, teach these kids safe shooting and, you know, general life skills like Hank mentioned before. But again, just thank you for all your support and we really appreciate it. I would like to recognize some of our BB, oh, I'm Adam Harper, one of the coaches of the PB team, and along with Jamie Gordy over there, we coached the 4H BB team here. But if I can get all my, my BB shooters to come up, there's a bunch of them. So, if all you guys can just come up here. We had another, while they're coming up, we had another great season. All of our individual matches this year, we placed first place in, in that. And then at state, we ended up ninth overall in the state this year. With our state team, our number one state team consisted of Aubrey Finley, Finn Griner, Freya Combs, Bristol McCullers, Will Greathouse, Jackson Carter, and Zach Finley. But we were able to also take, I think it was six teams to state this year, so we were able to qualify everybody on our team to go to state this year. And at state, we shoot, we shoot four different positions in all of our, all of our competitions. We shoot prone, standing, sitting, and kneeling. This year at state, overall, we placed four in the top ten, I'm sorry, three in the top ten. Olivia took six, Violet took seventh, and Madison Everett took eighth. In prone, Olivia Barth took second. In standing, Violet Combs took second, Madison Everett took six. In sitting, Madison Everett took tenth. And then after state, we pick a team and we, we go to nationals out in Rogers, Arkansas, every year that Daisy puts on. And this year, our nationals team consisted of Will Greathouse, Finn Griner, Preston Griner, Bristol McCullers, and Zach Finley, along with our alternates this year were Aubrey Finley and Daniel Jennings. And overall, this year, our team took fourth in the nation, so we're really proud of that. And at nationals, they have a team competition and alternate competition and a champions competition. The champions competition consists of shooters that were on the, our national team the year before. They can't shoot the next year, so they have a champions division for them. And they also have an alternates division, which Aubrey Finley took first overall in the alternates with a third place in standing and a second place in sitting. And our champions division this year was Madison Everett, Olivia Barth, Jackson Carter, Violet Combs, Freya Combs, Chase Wiley. And in that, we placed four in the top ten overall in champions. Fourth was Madison Everett, eighth was Freya Combs, fifth was Olivia Barth, and tenth was Violet Combs. And in individual positions, Olivia Barth placed third and Madison Everett placed third. So, that kind of sums up our whole season. Another successful season, and thank you all for allowing us to come.
They're gonna have to double up a little bit. There you go. Good evening. We see each other once again, right? You know, I think we're getting this to be a habit, right? Which is a good thing. So, I'm Galen Davis. I'm the coach of the 4H Archery Team. And, you know, wanted to talk a little bit about our successes this year. You know, two years ago, we went to state. This year, we didn't qualify because we didn't have enough individuals, right? So, that's really a good problem. But, we did have two individuals that performed very well on the state level this year. One of our shooters, a senior compound, finished second as an individual in the state. She was four points from Master and as an individual. Then we had a young, a young man who's only in the sixth grade. For two years in a row, he's finished first in the Cloverleaf Novice Division. That is a feat that is surreal, to be that young and be able to accomplish that, because that's one of the largest classes in the state of Georgia. But, as a group, we want to say thank you for everything the county has done for us and will continue to do for us. We do appreciate it. I have two of our team members here, Clinton Davis and Douglas Colburn. If you all would, just step up here real quick. You know, but again, thank y'all for everything y'all do. If you have any questions about our program, feel free, just let me know.
I want to take the time to thank all you parents that devote your time to these children teaching safety. And they're gonna come in contact with a gun or something at some point in life, and they need to know safety. And it's a, it's a good program. And if without your parents providing the time to teach them, we wouldn't have this thing. So, I want to thank y'all. Hank, is there anything else on shooting sports?
Good evening Board. I'm Kason Howard. I'm the Walton County 4H Agent. So, I kind of help out everybody at, to some point with our shooting sports, but really, we could not accomplish this without the support of the county. We could not accomplish any of this without the support of all of our volunteer coaches. So, if everybody would give a round of applause to our excellent volunteers.
Thank you all very much. Does that wrap that up? Hank, we will take a short recess until the posted time of our board meeting at six o'clock. So, you got about nine minutes.
If, if 4H can head this way, if you're, if you're, a way we can avoid the...
Attention, it's 6:00, and it's time for our regular monthly meeting. If everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance and then the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like for us today to remember a great asset there, Kenny, was Bo Warren, who passed away last week. He's been in our prayers for a long time, and I just like him. He was a great man. He leaves two children, has a great wife. Just, we all need to keep him in our, him and his family in our prayers. So, we have a minute of silence, and then I'll have, say grace. Father, we come to you tonight with a, with a sad heart, and please watch over the Warren family, as I know they'll struggle in the future with losing a father and a husband, and, and us as the county is losing a great asset, and a wonderful person, and a great friend. Father, please be with us tonight, and watch over us, and help us all to make the right decisions. Please bless us, and bless everyone here, and keep everyone safe as we go home. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. You want to do that retirement?
Sure. Is Mr. Christopher Pounds here? I'll go ahead and read this so we can move on. Each month, we recognize our retirees from Walton County. Christopher Pounds, he was originally hired July 11th of 94 as a temporary firefighter. He went full-time in August of 94. Promoted to firefighter driver engineer, April 13th of 98 through 2005. Rehired as a temporary firefighter in March of 2006. Went full-time as a firefighter driver engineer, fireman three, February '07 through '22. Transferred to EMS from FIRE as an EMT in October of '22 until his retirement date. And he'll be presented with a plaque, "In sincere appreciation of his dedicated years of service with Walton County, we hope you enjoy your well-deserved retirement of September 1st, 2025." So, this will be presented to Mr. Pounds.
Okay, I'll call our meeting to order, and roll call everyone's present, except for our empty seat. You have the agenda before you. Are there any additions or deletions on the agenda? I would like to add one item on the agenda under 5-3, and start the discussion on replacing Commissioner Warren's seat with the board while we're here. And, anybody else got anything else to add? If not, recommend a adoption of the agenda motion.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. We have second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. We have two proclamations, and I'm going to try to read those. One is National Recovery Month. I need the proclamation, please. Well, we're declaring this month, September Recovery Month, through this proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and well-being, and recovery from addiction occurs every day through a variety of recovery, support services, and treatment programs. And prevention of substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover all across and around the nation. And millions of people across the United States are living happy, joyous, and free and long-term recovery. And the 2025 Georgia Recovers Bus Tour celebrates Georgia recovers in communities, and recognizes we are never alone in this journey through recovery. And the Georgia Recovers Bus Tour will deliver over 100 overdose reversal kits to communities across Georgia, to be accessible in local government buildings. And education throughout our communities about recovery and addiction is essential to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by many people in recovery. And to help more people experience and sustain long-term recovery, the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, the Georgia Council for Recovery, and the Georgia General Assembly Working Group on Addiction and Recovery invite all residents of the state of Georgia to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, David G. Thompson, Walton County Commission Chairman, and on behalf of the National, on behalf of the Walton County Board of Commissioners, by virtue of authority vested in me by the laws of Walton County, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025, National Recovery Month. In Walton County, Monroe, Georgia, and call upon people of Walton County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, sport this year's recovery theme, Georgia recovers in communities. Sign this day, September the 2nd. And, is Kathy, is this Kathy Bedlow?
Yeah.
Is Kathy Bedlow here? If she would like to come up and get a copy of this proclamation? Give her all this. We have a second. This proclamation is Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, September 2025. Whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women in the United States, and causes more deaths than any cancer of the female reproductive system. And in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is about 1 in 78. And the American Cancer Society estimates that in 2024, 19,680 cases of ovarian cancer will be newly diagnosed, and 12,740 individuals will die from the disease nationwide, including estimated 620 new cases and 429 deaths in Georgia alone. Ovarian cancer often presents with vague or no symptoms. There is no reliable early detection test, and treatment options remain limited, making diagnosis particularly difficult and urgent. And in the five-year survival rate for ovarian cancer remains only 50%. And outcomes vary greatly depending on the stage at which the cancer is detected. And raising awareness and supporting education, research, and community-based initiatives such as those led by organizations like the Ovarian Cancer Research Alliance and Hearts of Teal are essential in improving survival rates, supporting survivors, and offering hope to families affected by this disease. September is nationally recognized as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, an opportunity to honor those who have battled ovarian cancer, support those currently in treatment, and work toward greater awareness, early detection, and improved treatment option. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Walton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 2025 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Walton County, Georgia, and encourages all residents to learn more about the signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer, to support those who are affected, and to join in raising awareness through education, outreach, and efforts. Because I hereby fix my signature to this proclamation. And is Kimberly Earhart here? We will hold that, for that. All right. All right, county manager's discussion is up next, John.
Okay, I've got a few updates I wanted to share with you. Got some good news coming out of DOT for project number 0016386. This is three locations of intersection improvements or roundabouts on State Route 20. We were originally notified by DOT that to relocate our utilities that are in the right-of-way, our portion of the project cost was going to be over $2,068,000. We were able to successfully plead our case with DOT based on other projects involving utility relocation and other safety projects that we're currently working on with them, and DOT has agreed to cover that cost of $2 million. The county will be required to pay 100% of preliminary engineering. That's already been done, so when it's identified as a project that was budgeted and approved, so I'll be presenting the commission chair with a utility aid memorandum of understanding with DOT for them to fund the $2,68,863.52 project for those three intersections. If the county had to pay that, it would have been a direct hit to the water fund budget, and would have greatly had the potential to impact water rates for water customers in Walton County. So, real successful negotiation with DOT there. We currently have 18,220 active customers, and other than punch list items, the Center Hill Church Road 16-inch waterline installation is, is complete. In recycling, on September 13th, we're going to have a community shred day at the recycling center. And then on November 22nd, we have an upcoming American Recycles Paint Day collection. Completed resurfacing since last month has been Ashley Court, John Deere Road, the columns at Providence Club, which is three roads, and Walker Park Drive. Resurfacing projects for the city of Jersey on Stargill Road under the Service Delivery Agreement, and we did cross-terrain replacements in Cornish Mountain Church Road. Board of Elections, they're moving forward with the November elections, and they're actually processing 3,000 new voter registrations through Department of Driver Services. With that, that's the monthly update that I have for you for tonight.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions of the county or manager from the board? All right, next up is discussion, Walton County's pension plan for employees. We just closed it out to new employees and gone with the 401 plan. But what's left behind is beginning to, there's an unfunded liability. It started off when the plan change was done in 2019. It started out as $12,380,000 added to the unfunded liability of this plan. And we've been paying three, three and a half million a year into the plan. In 2022, the plan lost $9 million in the stock market. But this unfunded liability has kept increasing. The audit and highlights of the new report that I just received, the plan has gone now from $20,461 last year to $24,420,000. This is scary. It's drawing a 7% return against the taxpayers of this county. And I need two of you to volunteer to work with me on a way to stop this. And Pete, you weren't involved, and I wasn't involved when this was done. The rest of the existing board was. But I need two of y'all to volunteer for us to come up. Our policy states that this be paid in full. I'm scared if we put that much additional in the stock market, that you could lose another nine, 10 million at the blink of a bat. I've never seen plans like this that didn't have a cash reserve. And we need to come up with a game plan and adjust our policy for the future Walton County and get a hold of this. And I wanted to make public aware, and this board, that this has gone from $12,280,000 in 2019 to $24,420,000 today. And, I'd like for two volunteers from the board tonight to just work with me so we can come back to the board with a proposal on how we're going to handle this in the future. And I'm asking for volunteers. All right, Doc, thank you. Okay, Doc and Tim. This is no committee. This is just, we, we work and come back to the board. With that being discussed, any questions? With that being discussed, any questions on this? This is a pension plan which most private companies have gotten away from. We are now away from it for new hires, but we have a lot of old hires still in this plan. And it's, we need to put some reins on it.
Chairman, I think it's important to note that that was one of the main reasons that the reserve fund was not being able to be utilized for balancing the budget this year was because of that growing obligation.
All right, thank you. Under 530 adding, Tim, that was real nice about Bo. With just one year and four months left in his term, this board can appoint a replacement. It's been done two ways. You've looked out for candidates and done it, or you've did the recognition of the dying commissioner. I believe last time that was Mr. Robinson asked for Kirkland to be appointed to his seat. I visited many times with Bo and his wife, and toward the end, he asked me if she would do it, and which she will, to appoint his wife to finish his term. I won't fill y'all out on that. Emery is very smart. We do need a woman on this board to keep some of us straight. But I think it would be a great thing to do to appoint her to finish Bo's term. She knows his constituents. She knows what he would have done. And any comments from the board? If not, I'll make a motion that we honor Bo's wish and appoint his wife, Emery Warren, to the District 1 seat for the remainder of his term. Will we discuss if I get a second?
A second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. And what you want to do?
I'm asking, would it be beneficial to get input from that district? I mean, you may have spoken with her. I haven't spoken with her. I don't know if any of the other board has.
I have spoken to her. She said she would be honored to finish her husband's term, and it was Bo's wish. But I'm open. We got a motion and a second. You know, it's been done both ways, Lee. When Bo was appointed to the board, the board interviewed candidates from the district. When Kirkland got appointed to board, it was Mr. Robinson's wish that Kirkland Dixon finished his term. So it's been done both ways, and it's up to the board, which way they want to do it.
I mean, I think it'd be fair to hear from her that, I mean, she's, I've met her. She's a great person.
I personally called her and asked her. Well, any other discussion? I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes with the board here. Now we can turn over the old business to planning and zoning.
Okay, our first case is LU250199 and Z25-0198. This is a land use change from suburban to employment center and rezone 2.64 acres from A1 to B3 for outdoor storage and car repair. The applicant and owner, Melody C. Jackson Moon, property located at 1350 Mountain Creek Church Road. This is in District 6. After the planning commission and then it was tabled here last month, the applicant has stated that they would like to have this withdrawn. And as of lunchtime today, 80% of the stuff have been removed from the property. And so we feel sure that we didn't go back this afternoon, but that if not done, it will be done, and if the board would like to accept this withdrawal. The applicant is here if you need to, you know, speak to them, but I did confirm with them prior to the...
This is Kirkland's district?
Yep. I'll make a motion that we accept their withdrawal.
You got a motion and second to accept the applicant's withdrawal? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? That one passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next case is LU25-0063 and Z250062. This is a land use change from suburban to Highway Corridor and a rezone of seven acres from R1 to B2 for mini warehouse storage facility and a variance to allow cross-district access. The applicant is Angel Zarita. The property owners are Pablo and Maria Zarita, properties located at 275 Highway 81. This is in District 3. And I'd just like to explain a little bit about this cross-district access. We got a site plan right here. So the property, the property line is this right here. You know, you see the property line, and they're going to enter from a property, this adjoining property, that will not be rezoned, which is how we get the cross-district use.
So it's a shared driveway?
It's a shared driveway. It is the only way that DOT would give them access to this property. So it was really, you know, resolving that issue and allowing the property owner on this property has agreed to give them an easement, and they don't have to rezone their property because they're, you know, they're not going to be commercial. So let's see, there was a few citizens there that had concerns about visibility due to loss of trees. They said the use was not appropriate in the area, a fire risk, noisy lighting, and concerns about the entrance. The planning commission did recommend approval with the following conditions: to allow the variance for cross-district access, to have all lighting pointed downward, and no outside storage.
All right, thank you.
I'll put the site plan back up here for you.
I'll turn it over to the county attorney to hold the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we open the first public hearing, I just want to remind everybody of the public hearing ground rules. First off, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address and direct your comments to the board. The applicant's going to go first. Each side has a total of 10 minutes. If the applicant doesn't use all 10 minutes, that time can be reserved for rebuttal. But as far as the opposition on any particular matter, please remember there's 10 minutes, so your neighbor would like to be heard as well, I'm sure, so don't monopolize that time or repeat the same comments over and over so that you can help your neighbor out to have an opportunity to speak as well. So with that, we'll open the public hearing on this first matter. Would the applicant like to come forward and address the board?
Hi, my name is Angel Zarita. I live at 80 Payton Street, Covington, Georgia. I'm here to request approval for the rezoning for R1 to B2 for the mini warehouse.
Any questions for the applicant at this time?
Are these climate-controlled or just regular?
Just regular.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this rezone request? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward one at a time. And state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Pam Kirkland. I live at 265 Old Highway 81, Oxford, Georgia, 30054. My reasoning for coming forward is to tell you I have 57 signatures from people who could not be here. Some people have lived there for 79 years, some people two years. It's not a part of our community. We do not need a storage unit. There are 33 storage facilities within 10-mile radius of our homes. This is not agriculture land, but we are pro-agriculture. We have my husband along with four other people that are beekeepers, and the honeybees are so important to our environment. We like the quiet community. That is the reason that my husband and I moved here. We are Walton County residents. We, this petitioner lives in Newton County. There are plenty of commercial properties that he could purchase, and we know that this is residential. We would like it to be kept residential so we can keep our quiet. We all work hard. It will bring crime. It will bring more accidents on 81, which we don't need. Firefighter, my husband is an ex-firefighter. He says fighting fires in storage facilities are hard because you never know what's in them. So we do ask that you, I would just put it, you wouldn't want it in your backyard. As hard as we work to pay for our homes and the quiet that we have. I'm going to let some of my other neighbors speak. Would you like a copy of our petition?
William Davis, I live at 295 Old Highway 81, which Old 81 spur parallels to 81. And so I do have some personal problems with this that, like my neighbor said, if you Google "storage units," there are 20 storage units within five miles of Walnut Grove. And the road on 81 that everybody's talking about, it's not flat like you're going from Walnut Grove to Loganville. It's a 10% grade. In fact, when I'm coming out of Old 81 in the morning, it seems like I get, I'm possibly getting hit all the time because people are speeding. So personally, you know, I don't want to hear any, I don't want to see light pollution or noise pollution 24 hours a day next to my property. There are, I mean, if it was still a tree stand there, it's not. It's like 10, 10 houses, 10 residential houses that back up to the property. And if you look on the Walton County Planning and Development Letter and then the Planning and Development Case Information, the addresses and the map numbers are wrong. So I'm not sure why that is. So besides my own personal property, I mean, prop, or concerns with having another storage unit, he also wants to build a warehouse for drywall. And I'm just concerned that he won't be able to, from a cost accounting aspect, I don't think he's going to be able to get enough business based on the number of units that are already there when he's going to have to pay anywhere from $31 to 41 square foot to just build these units, which, I mean, you can see, if the average planty, or storage unit is 109,000 square feet and it costs you $40 to build it, that's, I'm, what, $3.3 million? So he's got seven acres there, half of it's a pond. It's a very steep grade, so this, just one storage unit alone will take 2.5 acres. So he's not going to have any way to scale up his business. And if you look at Article 4, Part 4, Section 160 of the Standard Review, it says that he has retail, retail on one side and retail on the other side. He doesn't. He's got residential on one, on all three sides, and on the north side, he's got a gas station. So if you, also if you look at, so if you look at number one under that and then go to number five, it says, "Under the current zoning, the property is less desirable because of the two neighboring commercial properties and frontage on a busy state highway. In this case, the property is more suited for commercial." But it's got residential on three sides. It's not, I mean, that's not correct. And the last thing I'd like to say is, Mr., the Zaritas, according to the Secretary of State website, they've dissolved at least three or four companies for drywall companies. So, and they'd have another business that's for construction, but they say they only make $50,000 a year. So, I mean, why do I have, keep having my businesses dissolved? And how am I going to pay for $3.5 million worth of mortgage? So I'm just really concerned that I'm not going to use this property for what they're saying they're going to use it for. That's my biggest concern. Besides having the fact that I'm going to, I'm going to hear people, I can't keep people from coming on my land 24 hours a day. I mean, I work eight or 10, 10 hours a day. So that's my gist of the situation.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come back for rebuttal?
All I can say is that it will be a secured facility. We will be putting up fences, using security cameras, having gated, coded access, 24/7 security. So I understand their concern. I appreciate it. You mentioned I did live in Newton County. I recently moved to Walton County last month, so I'm now a resident right, like, five miles down the road, so it's very important to me as well. But yeah, it will be a secured facility.
Any questions for the applicant?
What's this drywall storage, what's that all about?
It's a warehouse for a drywall distributor.
Say again, I'm sorry.
A warehouse for a drywall distributor.
So that is separate business than the storage facility?
Yes. Yes, it's for tenants, we have a tentative tenant that is, we are in talks with already to occupy the space.
So that a separate building, separate access and everything? I mean, you said, you said your access is going to be limited by?
Yes. It'll be two separate gated access, one for the mini storage and one for the warehouse.
So is that a retail establishment or just people that come from time to time? How many people?
Distributor. Typically, maybe five to 10 people onsite at a time for a couple hours a day, but throughout the, that's just in the mornings where they're getting loads ready. Throughout the day, it's maybe five people onsite.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, you've asked your questions. Entertained a motion for this request.
Sure, it does have a 50-foot buffer.
It does. Yes, sir.
I went out there today so we can put that buffer non-disturbed.
It is a 50-foot transitional buffer. Nothing can be built in there.
Can we, can we, can I add that, that 50-foot buffer and nothing?
That it remains in the vegetative state that it is?
Yeah.
Yes.
I make that motion with, approve the, with the planning committee's recommendations and add a 50-foot non-disturbed buffer, and I make a motion to approve.
And just for clarity, the planning commission conditions were all downward lighting and no outside storage?
Correct.
Do we have a motion to add a 50-foot buffer and no downward lighting and no outside storage? Do we have a second? I'll second it to get y'all to vote on it.
So you have downward lighting, right? Okay.
Any other discuss?
Only downward lighting.
Only downward lighting.
I'm sorry.
If I read that wrong, it was...
Just clarification of only downward lighting.
Yeah, only downward lighting. Sorry.
Okay. Make a clarification. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call question, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got one no.
Adam, sir.
That was Adam's, wasn't it? I sort of thought. Okay. Okay. All right, seven point two.
Okay, this is Z-two-five dash zero-two-four-nine, rezone two-point-four-five acres from A-one to A to grow and sell cut flowers for retail and wholesale purchase. Applicant is CJ Hibbs Barros. Owner is CJ and Nico, Nicholas Hibb Barros. Property is located at thirty-six eighty-five McCullers Road. This is in District Two. At the Planning Commission, there was no opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval as submitted.
All right, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Would the applicant like to come forward and address the board?
My name is CJ Hibb Barros, and I would like permission to grow flowers at my home for sale.
Any questions?
I have one question. Why can't she grow flowers on A-one?
She can grow the flowers, but in order to sell?
Oh.
She needs the rezon.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
All right, what's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion we approve as submitted by the Planning Commission.
We got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Seven point three.
Okay, seven point three. Rezone Z-two-five dash zero-two-five-zero, rezone seven-point-two-seven acres from A-one to A to grow vegetables and livestock for nonprofit organization and educational tours. Applicant is Henry G. Reed, Jr. Owners are Chance and Eva Reed. Property is located at six-eleven Youth Jersey Road. This is in District Three. At the Planning Commission, there was no opposition. The Planning Commission recommended approval with the following conditions. Number one, that the livestock be used for, uh, tours only, only for tours. They follow the guidelines of the ordinances for the animals, and no commercial sales and only use for nonprofits.
All right, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Would the applicant like to address the board?
Good evening, distinguished Walton County Board of Commissioners and, and residents. My name is Henry Reed. Uh, this is my son Chase Reed, for the record, C-H-A-C-E, not Chance. Uh, we, uh, we, I founded a nonprofit organization, and we do food insecurity. Uh, most of our work has been done in Gwinnett County, but we've traveled all over the state, in and out of state during disaster relief and things of that nature. Uh, we've, were blessed to come across this particular property. My son and I have found an opportunity to kind of close the loop on what we do in regards to food insecurity. One of the things that we're often asked is, well, how do we get people from that stage to something more sustainable? And the educational component is something that we wanna offer to young people and residents in order to show young people where the food comes from. So, you know, as an opportunity once again for us to utilize this property to grow crops, uh, to raise small-scale livestock so that we can educate people and show them where their food comes from. So, that is our intent for this particular property as a nonprofit, uh, to be able to showcase basically the agricultural concepts that this county has shown a lot of people. So, we do intend to maintain the rural character of the property. Uh, we're excited to be in this county to be able to do this. Uh, we've seen a lot of example, and we've been welcome with open arms with our neighbors and, and people in, in regards to what we intend to do with this particular property.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
All right, uh, entertain a motion on this request.
I make a motion to approve with the guideline set by the planning and zoning.
All right, we have a motion to, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seven point four.
Okay. Case Z-two-five dash zero-two-five-three. This is a rezone of eighty-four-point-one-six acres from A-one and A-two to R-one OSC for residential subdivision. Applicant is Reliant Homes Georgia LLC. The owner of the property, of one of the parcels is Alcovey Builders, Inc., and then there's another parcel that is owned, a couple of parcels owned by MFT Land Investments. Property is located on Youth Jersey and Monroe Jersey. This is in District Three. So, this encompasses a couple of these, um, parcels. At the Planning Commission, um, there was some opposition. They had concerns with traffic and, you know, uh, assurances about the buffer. The Planning Commission recommended approval as submitted. I did want to address with the board, um, the, uh, campaign disclosure form. We require in our department that every rezone that is submitted have a campaign disclosure form. It is something that we have not listed online in part of our package as a result of just history, you know, back in the day when we had to make copies of everything. We just did the most relevant, you know, the staff report, the, what they were asking for, their letter of intent, their answers to their questions, uh, review questions, and then their site plan. However, over the years, I've never really thought about it. If there was ever an answer yes on a campaign disclosure, we would put it in the packet so that, you know, the board was aware of it. Moving forward, after talking with the county attorney, we will, from now on, we'll make sure that everything is in the packet. You know, we usually don't make copies of the recorded deed and the recorded plat. We just do the site plan. But they're always in our office, in our records. And this one was there at the time it was submitted, and I just wanted to let the board know that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And the disclosure form also, for clarity, based on how the law is written on that, it's, it's basically from the, from the person who's actually, the actual applicant, the party who fills out and files the paperwork, um, or an attorney. If an attorney's involved, an attorney has to submit one as well.
Right. And so, there is one in there from the applicant.
So, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward?
My name is Ned Butler, representing Reliant Homes Georgia LLC, five-seven-four Conyers Road, Loganville, Georgia. As stated, we are requesting a rezone of eighty-four-point-one-six acres from A-one, A-two to R-one OSC. We want to develop a seventy-lot subdivision, as you can see there. Comments that came up during planning and zoning was a fifty-foot transition buffer that we did not include around one A-one property that's on Lot forty-two, that if you can see my cursor, was right here. We addressed that concern, added the fifty-foot buffer that goes along there. We are providing the required twenty-five percent open space on this project. We will build this product out ourselves. It will be our, um, product that ranges anywhere from two thousand to twenty-nine-hundred square feet. And I am here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward, sir.
Uh, my name is Tim Keel. I live over on HD-Athe Road. Uh, one question is, how many, how many lots will be in this subdivision? How many?
Seventy.
Seventy? So, that's, that's eighty-four acres, right? And they're gonna turn it into seventy homes. Uh, and then seven-point-five down here, you're gonna do a hundred-and-twenty-one acres, too. So, I figure that's another hundred homes. So, we're looking at a hundred-and-seventy-five homes, which will put about an additional three-hundred cars on the road, because it'll be two cars per house, maybe three. I did a little study this morning, just on HD-Athe Road, and this afternoon. At six-thirty this morning, I had about forty-five cars come by in fifteen minutes. On average, that's about a hundred-and-eighty cars down HD-Athe Road. Okay? And that's, you know, that's, this subdivision is within five miles of my house. This afternoon, at three-forty-seven, I had sixty-four cars, which averaged out to about two-hundred-and-fifty-six cars per hour. So, if you do an average of just, say, two-hundred-and-twenty cars, down HD-Athe Road for eight hours, we're talking seventeen-hundred cars. So, let's add another, I don't know, two-hundred cars to the mix. I, I mean, I don't like that. I just don't, because that's what's gonna happen. And Reliant Homes, as they've already got enough lots in Walton County to build on, they couldn't finish them in the next ten years, I don't think. So, do we really wanna give them another eighty acres to do with, or do we wanna keep that farmland?
Would anyone else like to? Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come back?
The one thing I would like to address, uh, this property does fall within a suburban future land use character, and we are requesting a zoning that's allowed within that. We are also proposing to develop this within all standards of the code, and are not requesting any variances. Cannot speak to traffic that would be created here. We will meet all standards required by Public Works Department in the review of the subdivision.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Entertain a motion on this request.
I make a motion to follow the planning and zoning and approve this.
We have a motion? I'll second it to get it to a vote. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Lee Bradford?
They're conducting a meeting, please, please be quiet.
All right, seven-five.
Okay, this is land use two-five dash zero-two-five-six and rezone Z-two-five dash zero-two-five-seven. Land use change from employment center to suburban and rezone one-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-four-three acres from A-one to an A-one twenty-four-hundred overlay for residential subdivision. Applicant is JW Residential Group LLC. The owner is Three SD LLC. Property is located on Row Road and Highway seventy-eight. And this is split between District Three and District Five. The, um, let's see. There was some opposition with concerns about the number of lots and traffic and, and various other things. The Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions. However, I want to just let the board know that the conditions, the, um, one of the Planning Commission members called me today and said, "Part of our motion was not placed on here." And so, I went back and I listened to the video, and he was right. So, the, the motion was, a motion to recommend, um, approval of the request with condition that a note be on any sales agreement that states this is a commercial corridor and has the potential for a commercial property, and that the frontage of the property remain undisturbed, leaving all existing trees except for the area for the entrance. This area shall be replanted with trees and shrubs with fencing preferably behind the landscaping to the point where the existing stand of trees remains undisturbed. So, and this is a copy, um, of the development.
Any questions for Sharna?
Sharna, what you explained, the twenty-four-hundred overlay, exactly what that mean?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. So, a twenty-four-hundred overlay is a type of development that is allowed in the county in the A-one zoning. The minimum lot size primarily is twenty-four-hundred square foot. It can't be smaller than that. The lots, um, in an A-one have an overall density of one dwelling per two acres. However, with this overlay, you can go down in size, but your density cannot be more. So, this is a hundred-and-twenty-one acres, and there's fifty-four proposed lots. But the biggest thing about the, um, twenty-four-hundred is actually the square footage of the house.
So, actually a bigger house than what?
It is a bigger house than what's allowed in, um, an OSC. Yes, sir.
So, why don't, why don't leave it as A-one and just build a twenty-four-hundred square-foot house? What's the advantage of taking it?
It is to be able, so there's some, a lot of floodplain on here, is to be able to minimize your lot size and still be able to get your density.
Okay.
All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to address the board?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Joshua Scoggins with the Law Firm of Underwood Scoggins. Have the pleasure of being here tonight on behalf of JW Residential Group LLC. I have here with me tonight Emma and John Chadrick, the owners of the company. As your staff indicated, we're here tonight seeking two things. First is the land use amendment, and contemporaneously with that is a rezoning of a hundred-and-twenty-one-point-four-three acres located on the east side of Row Road to the south of Highway seventy-eight. Do you have my PowerPoint? Did you get the email? While she's finding that. Let's start by taking a look at the land use amendment. This property is shown on your character area map. It's shown on your character area map for Employment Center. This is the property here, and you can see that it actually is split on the western side by Row Road. There are two remnant tracks there to the west. And you'll also notice that there are five parcels that are sandwiched between this property's northern boundary and Highway seventy-eight. So, if you take a close look at the survey, you'll see those five tracks. And what we're limited to is a tiny little wedge of area, which you can see right there, that touches Highway seventy-eight. So, to have this as a large-scale employment center, which, again, this is a hundred-and-twenty-one acres, this isn't some one-acre-out parcel, you're talking about having to have all of your traffic, truck traffic, if you were to locate distribution centers, data centers, anything that's gonna use that size parcel. All that traffic gets routed out to Row Road, which is a tiny road. I drove down it today, and I've been down it many times before. I don't think we want a lot of truck traffic trying to come in and out of there. There you can see in color those five parcels that are conveniently wedged in between us and seventy-eight. They also create a visual screen that pre, precludes anybody from wanting to develop that property for a large-scale commercial use. You have existing buildings, existing retaining walls on, I think, three of those parcels, and one of those, I believe, is in the city of Monroe, maybe two. The second primary reason for changing the land use designation on this property, as your staff said, is the significant amount of environmentally sensitive area on this property. If I were developing this as a distribution center, or a data center, or a large-scale commercial use, you would be talking about mash grading. commercial use, you would be talking about mash grading as much of that site as possible, covering it with pavement, an impervious surface, and everything drains to that green stream to the south. And right there to the east on the edge of the site plan is the Alkobe River. So what you're talking about is creating a ton of pavement that would create a lot of runoff into the, one of the primary rivers in Walton County. What we're proposing instead is 40 acres of open space with lots, most of which exceed greatly one acre in size, some of them exceed two acres in size. But the key here that makes this different than many other subdivisions, and why we're asking for the conservation overlay, is because it keeps the lots out of the stream buffers. It keeps the lots out of the wetlands. There's no requirement that that be done, except in this conservation overlay. And what I typically see, and you can see it in the subdivision to the south, I believe, Lakeside at Monroe, whatever it's called there, the lots typically will run through the stream, out into the lake. And when everybody goes back there to put swing sets and treehouses and everything else in that buffer, they come to you and beg and say, "Well, I didn't know." That's why all of that area is controlled by the HOA in perpetuity. So again, this is something that has both environmental and practical economic considerations. In addition, there are several large parcels located, one just across Row Road, that are designated as employment centers as well. And they have literally 1,000-plus linear feet of frontage on Highway 78. We would be very hard-pressed to get a curb cut from DOT onto 78. And the reason for that is, working with DOT every day, I can tell you there's been a shift to making sure that if you have alternative access besides road frontage along a highway, that you utilize alternative access. So if we did not touch Row Road, yes, DOT would be obligated to give us a driveway cut on Highway 78. The way it's situated, I don't think they will. And I don't think it would be safe. So with that, we have, again, we're only proposing 54 lots on 121 acres. This could be far more dense if it were not under the conservation overlay. It would have, again, lots running all through the floodplain and all through the streams. Our goal is to protect all of those trees, and I know the neighbor spoke about last time. All that stuff remains undisturbed. I drove down it today. You're talking about pine trees along the frontage for the most part. All of, there's no reason for us to cut down big trees to put little ones back, when we can avoid doing that. So we want just as much as they do to preserve as many of those trees as possible. So JW Residential has an established footprint here in the county. They have a reputation here in the county. The Preserve at Good Hope is one of their neighborhoods. We've agreed to a series of proffered conditions that not only restrict this to having an HOA, minimum roof pitches, minimum exterior finishes in terms of aesthetics and quality, no vinyl or aluminum. All garages are side entry, two- and three-car garages. All the yards will be sodded. And again, I know some of these show front-enter garages, but these are just examples of another build that these, this company has done. So with that, you have the recommendation of the Planning Commission. This makes total sense, both practically and legally. And with that, I'll reserve the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Scoggins at this point? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward, sir.
I'm Tony Smith. I live on 781 Crystal Road. The gentleman just said Row Road was almost an impossible road to do any commercial on. You got 54 lots. You got at least 54 cars coming out of there every morning, give or take. And I know y'all know what Row Road looks like. It's a two-lane road out in the middle of the woods, crosses 78 Highway or 138, one way or another. You get that many cars on a little road like that, you're going to have a mess. You're going to have another problem across, for people who have to cross 78 Highway, or you're going to have a problem people turning onto 138. So either way you go, your roads won't handle 54 houses or industrial on Row Road. So y'all been down it, you know what it looks like. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition? Mr. Scoggins, would you like to address that?
Mr. Chairman, as the speaker indicated, Row Road is a small road, and he claims that it's not very usable for commercial or residential. Well, this property owner has a right to develop their property to some use other than a 121-acre green space. And this is the least intense use that we believe to be financially and economically viable. And it is certainly preferable to heavy industrial, commercial, business complex, which I represent a lot of data centers and a lot of distribution centers, and I can tell you that's probably what would end up coming in at some point in the future if we didn't go ahead and try to protect this area as best we could. So thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing on this matter.
Okay. Entertain a motion from the board on the...
I make a motion to approve all the planning zoning recommendations.
We got a motion to approve?
And all the proper...
Plus the proffered conditions, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Right. They weren't included on the Planning Commission, but if we could include them, that would be great. I got a copy of it.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Going to force me to second this one too, to get y'all to vote. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Chairman, I'm staying for this vote.
Let's see, that gives us 1, 2, 3, 4 in favor. Barely got it passed. One against, one abstaining. All right, impact fee schedule.
I'll take this one. One of the tasks I was asked to do was look at the impact fee schedule. We're currently charging $1,224.01 per single-family residential. Now, the impact fee schedule also applies to other types of development. The original study was done 20 years ago in '05, and that was when the $1,224.01 was actually adopted and implemented. In 2020, the methodology report that's required by the state and the Department of Community Affairs was updated. In the updated report, it was determined that the maximum fee for a single-family residential would be, or could be, $3,063,56. However, after that report was updated, and due to the economy at the time, no fee changes were adopted by the commission. And as part of looking at and creating a fee schedule for all fees charged by Walton County, which was adopted as part of the budget process, we chose to also revisit this impact fee schedule. You currently have before you three different options. I did a comparative analysis, and if you were to go all the way up to your maximum fee schedule, Walton County's impact fees would still be significantly behind other adjoining counties and others throughout the state. Not everybody has impact fees, but Walton County did implement those. So my encouragement is to revisit those. The three options that you have before you tonight are to keep them currently collected at 33.67 of the maximum, which is keep the $1,024.11. The second is to increase the fee to 66.34% or $2,048.19. Or the third option is to increase the fees to 100% of what the maximum is for the study of $3,063,56. I will remind you that this is collected on, at the time of permitting, and then those fees are distributed to those departments that are impacted by providing services to these residential. So EMS, fire, we bought fire trucks with this. We have impacts to our Parks and Recreation, so a lot of those things. EMS gets a portion of this. So all of the services that are connected to providing, or the departments that are connected to providing those services with this. So we'll need a motion to adopt authorizing the commission chair to sign any required documents by the state for the update and an implementation date. I would ask that you don't pick December 31st or January 1, just simply because that's when a lot of our business licenses are due. So would either select December 1st or February 1st for an implementation date in doing this. We have met with the builders during, through our planning department on our quarterly meetings. They have been advised of this. And I also asked the planning department to send this out to those attendees so that they would have a heads-up that this was also on the agenda tonight. It will have a future implementation date, but it is one of those things where rising cost, obviously, we discussed many, many things throughout our budget process. We'll even discuss some more of those tonight when we go over all of the contracts that are required for operating the jail that are on the agenda. But I would encourage you to consider reviewing and updating your impact fee schedule.
The last time was when they were adopted, 2005?
Yes, sir.
And they haven't been?
They have not been adjusted since. Now, I will tell you that if we spent the money that's required, and it's not a small amount, to do a new updated methodology report like was done in 2020...
Can we do?
That $3,063,5 would actually go up based on current budgeting. However, in order to keep the costs down, we haven't even implemented what we're allowed to right now. So my recommendation now is to implement within the current methodology report, and then we will look and make an assessment at when the new report would need to be updated. But yes, this is a 20-year-old fee that has not been changed.
What keeps us, if we decide to move forward with, say, option 3, what keeps us from implementing it now? And, because you mentioned a couple of dates, I think, one in December, one in February...
You could make an immediate implementation. One of the requests, and pretty much the only request that was made by, at our builders' meeting, was give us some heads-up so we'll have some advance notice and be able to incorporate that into business models. But you can, you can do it, you can implement it.
I personally don't see a problem with the highest rate. If you're in that business, you don't want to hit them blind, like tomorrow with it.
So would October 1st be a fair implementation date?
It'd be up to the board. I was going to recommend February 1st, but so they can get through the year-end. But I like the high one.
For option 3, starting October 1st?
For when?
October 1st of this year.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion?
With an implementation date of...
October 1st this year.
You said the number three option?
Number three.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, we have a motion, second, I call it.
Can you get it done by then?
We can get it done.
In that short a time?
We'll just have to send out immediate notice and update the fee schedule, but we're good to go. So the motion needs to be the amount, the implementation date, and then also updating of the fee schedule so that we can just upload everything into the existing fee schedule. And then that takes care of everything involving your impact fees.
All right, any other questions? We got a motion and a second. To go with the 100%, it be implemented October 1st?
And update the fee schedule.
And then we'll look at updating the methodology, I guess, next year, or...
We can look at that, yes, sir.
All right.
As part of the budget process, we'll have to...
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous with people here.
Did I need to state the amount for that, John, or are we good?
No, we're good. We're good, yeah. Thank y'all.
All right. You have item 8 ordinance changes. We've got six different ones for animal control. They're updating their restrictions, language about vehicles, animals locked in vehicles, backyard breeding, microchipping. We can approve all these at one time, or y'all can move to see them one by one.
We have staff here to answer any questions you may have. These are updates to the animal control policy, and they have been reviewed by the county attorney. So pending no questions, we're ready to move forward with approval.
Can I do them all at once?
I would like to do it, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all these.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second for the animal control ordinance changes. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Administrative consent agenda, does anyone, have you had time to go over that? You got your list of 25,000 or greater purchases, which this past month was considerable amount. You got your ratifications and actions taken by the Walton County Water and Sewer Authority, acceptance of a grant from Walton County Healthcare Foundation in an amount of $70,968.
That grant will supply to the new community...
Exercise equipment.
Exercise equipment to the new community center at no cost.
And you got your IGAs with the city of Monroe on cardboard. You got your holiday schedule, and you got your MOU partnership, any...
And then there was the IGA on the library. Just kept her with it.
We got a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll second.
We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, finance. We've got to make the budget amendments on some changes that we approved last meeting.
The first budget amendment is to increase expenditures for personnel in the amount of $2,110,659.33. This was approved during our last board meeting. This is for the 25 new additional employees that will be needed for the new jail, and this amendment would result in a decrease in the fund balance. The next budget amendment is to increase expenditures for small equipment in the amount of $17,862.50, and in uniforms, in the amount of $58,200. And this was also approved during our last board meeting, and this is the equipment that the new, for the new jail on the employees. This would also result in a decrease in fund balance. The next one would be for 911. This is a budget amendment to increase expenditures for personnel in the amount of 25,000. And this was approval for shift different pay for 911 employees that work night shifts, which was also approved during our last August board meeting. This amendment would result in a decrease in the fund balance. The next item is for Coroner. He's doing a budget transfer to move funds that were, are unused in equipment to purchase a small, for small equipment, for a copier that is needed. This transfer would have no effect on fund balance. For Public Works, for SPOSS, this budget amendment is to increase the budget expenditures, contract labor by $87,500, and this relates to the resurfacing project-linked budget that was approved at the August 5th board meeting. This amendment would result in an overall decrease in fund balance in the SPOSS fund. The next item would be for EMS. This budget amendment is to increase revenue by $12,400. This budget amendment is to increase revenue by $12,459.89 from a trauma grant, money that they received, to increase expenditures for small equipment in the same amount. This has no effect on fund balance. And lastly, Parks and Recs, a budget amendment to transfer expenditures in the amount of $9,637.30 from temporary employees to regular employees. This is being done to cover additional expenses of reclassifying a position. This transfer would have no effect on fund balance.
John, question. The 25, is that, that's the last 25, right?
For jail staff, that is the last 25 of the projected number we received. Yes, sir.
Make a motion, this is a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
We got a second. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. All right, did you include the deep patching? You did not, did?
John, you can only laugh when you can't make it.
This is for roads and bridges, additional deep patching and resurfacing to amend the 26-year budget.
Yes, sir. This is the project-length budget for three roads, total of $115,500.
All right, any questions from John? Read that, read that total amount out louder for me, please.
$115,500.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
I got a question. On John Deere Road, I know people would have been fighting, paving for a long time. Is that, what part of John Deere Road is that?
That's the Walton Road.
That's the Walton Road side?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, they're good with that side?
Yeah, we paved the other end, I think, two years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion to approve this?
Second.
You got a motion?
Second.
Did I get a second?
Yep.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Now, under contracts, 11-1 is Exxon Enterprises Interview Rooms at the Walton County Sheriff's Office. Equipment's all already approved. We're going to have final approval, subject to final review by the county attorney, correct?
Yes, sir. All of that is ongoing. Chip is just going back and forth with them on language on most of these.
This is ending up contracts for the public safety company.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's take them one at a time. Any questions on the interview rooms? If not, entertain a motion to approve Exxon Enterprise Incorporated.
I make a motion to approve.
We got a motion. I need a second, please.
Second.
We got a second. All those, any other questions? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, you got My Justice Portal for the Walton County Sheriff's Department. This is a lot of software and equipment that goes in the final stages of our.
Motion to approve.
You got a motion to approve?
Second.
You got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Now, this MedTrust LLC went through bid process with multiple medical and state bid, and MedTrust has been approved. Now, we need to approve the contract, subject to the county attorney.
I make a motion to approve, subject to the county attorney.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same thing with the Summit Food Service. This is food service for the jail, for the prisoners. It was bid by multiple companies, and we've already approved awarding the contract. This is approving the contract. So entertain a motion to do that.
Second.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Paytail Communications, Inc. This is MA Communication Services, subject to the final review of the attorney. Any questions on that? Not entertain a motion to sign this contract.
I make a motion to approve, subject?
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we got new bid proposals. Carl, you want to come up? We're setting up emergency response in case of a major disaster like, like the hurricane that just missed us last year and went up in the Carolinas, and we're doing it through the MA. And he is bid to have people on standby for debris removal and debris monitoring.
That's right, hand in hand, yes, sir.
And it was bid on statewide contract, and you're prepared to recommend Southern Disaster Recovery for debris removal, to sign a contract with them, and entertain a motion to accept his recommendation on that.
Second.
All right, we got, we got a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That one passes. And then acceptance of proposal, debris monitoring. The way FEMA and them work, you got to have the guy removing it, and then you got to have someone watching and monitoring and documenting that they did do it. This is no relation to me, but the company that won it is Thompson Consulting Services out of Florida. They got the bid.
That's great. If it's, if it's any help, they, these contractors, with their documentation, it'll help us on our reimbursement, getting our money back from FEMA when we go to apply for, during those natural disasters.
All right, any other questions? Entertainer motion approved, this 12.2.
I make a motion to approve.
You got a motion approved?
I'll second.
You got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. All right, we are up for public comment to speak. We've had eight, I think, people sign, and I'm going to turn it over to the county attorney to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everybody that each person has three minutes to speak. It's the policy of the Walton County Board of Commissioners, that the speaker will not personally attack any county employee or elected official. Failure to comply with this policy will be considered out of order, and your comment time will be forfeited. Please also understand, this is not a question and comment section. This is an opportunity which the board appreciates for you to, to make comments on, or suggestions on any topic that you would like. As you know, there's a process for signing up in advance, and the board has your, please repeat your name and address, but if there's anything that they need to follow up with you on, they will do that. So the first person that signed up to speak is Gareth Finley. Would Ms. Finley please approach?
My name is Gareth Finley. I live at 1695 Brush Creek Drive, Monroe, Georgia 30655. And I was the petition coordinator on a petition that has been in the front page of our Walton Tribune over the past month, and I just wanted to speak to the character of the people who signed the petition. These are courageous, solid citizens. 3,325 times, these people came forth and they signed their name, their address, and their email on a piece of paper, declaring that they wished to see the board of commissioners call a special meeting to roll back a millage rate increase. 3,325 times, those people came forward and they did something really unusual. They signed a petition with their First Amendment right to petition the government. And many of them are here tonight, standing in solidarity. This is not something that most people do daily. It's a very unusual and courageous move. I was with one group of citizens one afternoon with the petition, and a woman came up who didn't want to be seen with me, and she was about to hand in her petition and duck away when she saw that there were other members there who attend her church, and they started talking. It takes courage to stand up to the government when you feel they're not listening. And if there's something that adults understand, it's their money, it's their budget. They understand their money. And I just appreciate those citizens so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. Next up is Cherry Brooks. Cherry Brooks. Is Cherry Brooks here? Please come forward.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to air some of my concerns. My name is Cherry Jackson-Brooks. I've been a resident of Walton County for 20 years. One of my deep concern, and I'm a senior citizen, as there are many of us in this room, one of my major concerns is my tax increase. I filed an appeal. I was denied. One of my main concerns is the improvement value of my home, which is $200,600. My home is on easement. I can't build anything, I can't do anything. The easement is not being maintained, the violation code is not being looked at or anything. I filed a appeal. Three years ago, I was given a tax freeze, so they said that I was not able to get another freeze this year. Concerning the improvement value, my concern is I haven't improved anything on my home. I need clarity on that, because it said it's not the home that you have improved, it's the property itself. But my property point 84 acres, but I can't do anything with it because the gas pipes lines own that property, and they don't maintain it. Also, another private citizen own that property. So I pray that you all decrease that property tax, not only for myself, but for the other citizens, so that we will not be taxed out of our property. My current taxes are $1,118.19. I'm on a fixed income like many of the other residents, or I pray that you all do what's right for us. We build Walton County. We are the citizens. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Natalie Diaz. Natalie Diaz.
My name is Natalie Diaz. I live at 1217 East Church Street, Monroe, Georgia. I've been here for 16 years. My family has been in this county for five generations or more. I chose Monroe. I chose Walton County. And I'm disappointed in our leadership tonight, and that's why I came to voice my disappointment. I'm going to read so that I don't get emotional and get sidetracked. I'm here to voice that disappointment, especially in Chairman Thompson's conduct. I, along with numerous other citizens, have been deeply upset by the way he has spoken and reacted to us, especially in emails. There's email correspondence from Chairman Thompson, that he has used terms to reflect to us like town idiot, pitiful, to describe the citizens that he serves. That language is not just unprofessional, it violates the spirit of this county's Code of Ethics. Section 114 AB 3, members must refrain from abusive conduct or personal attacks toward the public. Section 114 AB 5, deliberations must be conducted with respect and civility. Section 114 3B, even in private communications, officials are expected to maintain respect because emails and notes can become public, and that affects public trust. I feel betrayed. Many citizens in this county feel betrayed, and we feel like we're not listened to. When elected officials use insulting language, it erodes confidence in our government. Citizens expect leadership to demonstrate respect and professionalism, no matter the situation. I ask the board to review this behavior under the Code of Ethics and to take formal action to hold Chairman Thompson accountable for this erroneous behavior. By addressing this issue, you will show the people of Walton County that accountability, that fairness and respect that we take so seriously. That matters to restoring trust for those of us who feel betrayed and belittled right now. Thank you for listening to my comments tonight. It is important that we all have an opportunity to voice these comments, even when we don't get automatic responses in this session. I do encourage you to reach out to the citizens who've reached out to you with sincerity, because I know I emailed folks and I called folks with genuine heartfelt concern, and I got some responses from Dixon, Adams, and Bradford in particular, that were very positive that they were listening to me. The other responses, and no responses, speak for themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Please, please. This is not a concert. Ronald Sack. Ronald Sack. Ronald Sack. Is Mr. Sack here?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ron Sack. R-O-N-S-A-C-K. I live in Good Hope, Georgia. I come here before you tonight as an angry Walton County resident, not only because of the 19.55% increase, but the way in which it was implemented. That decision, the way it was rammed through is unacceptable. While citizens were protesting right in the front yard of this courthouse, collecting names on signatures on a petition, you guys decided to ram this thing through. And that, that is a display of contempt and arrogance for the very people you're supposed to represent. You may see this tax increase as numbers on paper, but let me tell you something. Struggling households, single mothers with dependent children, people with disabilities, people, seniors who are living on fixed income, this comes at a crushing blow at a time when they are struggling to make ends meet. You should tighten your belts before asking us for more money. You should tighten your belts before asking us for more money. Recent tax bills, recent tax bills, that you were hoping would prove that this was miniscule and people would accept this tax increase, turned out to be anything but. They were a lot more than what you predicted and what Mr. Hammond said, a $20 average But I'm not here tonight just to complain about runaway tax hikes. Yeah, you guys too. I'm here tonight to talk about trust. When citizens are ignored, and you ram through a decision to increase taxes like you did without listening to their concerns, confidence in local government is eroded and faith in your leadership is crushed. I call on this board, I call on this board to do better. Cut wasteful spending on projects we do not need. Pickleball court, anyone? I want to talk, I want, show respect by listening to your constituents. There is never a wrong time to do the right thing. And I call on this board to commit now to rolling back this tax increase at your earliest convenience. And make no mistake, we are not going away. And we will not be ignored. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Sack, please wrap it up. Your three minutes is up.
Mr. Chairman, listen to the people. It's time for you to go.
Thank you.
Laura Morris? The people that signed up can speak. You can sign up next month.
My name is Laura Morris. I live at 3852 Mount Ena Church Road. I am a Director of Finance. I, the last 15 years of my career have been spent on budgeting and financing. I went through the 715-page fiscal year 26 document. I'm fully aware of the need for balanced budgets, and I know sometimes hard decisions have to be made to support the budget. But this board has lost the support of many of the taxpayers. Since January 2023, there have been 67 approvals for rezoning requests and only three denials, despite the pleas and objections of all the surrounding homeowners and objections from other board members.
Please don't interrupt the speaker.
Our voices don't matter. There were nine denial recommendations from the Planning Commission, yet approved by the board. One of these approvals is in my backyard that just broke ground today. How many of these new subjects, well, okay, I'm going to skip that one. I am certainly, I certainly am willing to do my part to help pay for law enforcement increases. My son is a police officer. But very offensive statements have been made on the May 6th, August 5th meetings and other places, that if we don't support this budget, we don't back the blue. Very offensive. My taxes raised $313 this year, really not very impactful for me, but it's still an increase. I bet if you had polled all the taxpayers of this county, we would have gladly paid higher taxes beginning four years ago in return for no development approvals. We wanted to keep Walton County rural, but now you've changed it and expect us to be happy about supporting it. The fiscal year 26 budget is increasing about $20 million. While the jail accounts for 9.6 million of this, the other law enforcement departments, and I went through each one, account for $3.6 million, up 20% from last year. That's a total of $13 million of this budget increase, all for law enforcement. Do we have that much of an increase in crime? Maybe this crime increase is due to all the growth, all the apartments, rental communities, et cetera. If you, if you exclude the large jail increase, the average increase per department was 15%. Why does the county get to increase its costs that much? Culture and Recreation increased 23.5% for $1.2 million. Coroner Department increased 48%. Animal Control increased 18.3%, this is year over year. The Public Defender increased 22%. Risk Management increased 10%. Elections increased 21.5%. The County Managers Department increased 12.4%. Why is there a $6 million budget for physicians in the jail? $6 million. Documents from the August 5th meeting showed that 11, this is the MedHealth that y'all just approved, it will cost $11,000 per inmate for medical coverage in the jail. That's absurd. The county manager, okay, I only got four seconds. I have one question. Does the, does the Walton County Finance Department not know how to do travel reimbursements? That personal miles are taxable per IRS regulations? I used to do those calculations. We've seen documents that personal miles are being reimbursed by taxpayer money.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Morgan Van Leuven. Morgan Van Leuven. Morgan Van Leuven.
My name's Morgan Van Leuven. I live at 3525 Claude Brewer Road in Loganville. I've lived in Walton County since 2003. I've owned my current home since 2022. Unfortunately, it's in District 2. That makes my representative Pete Myers. I can assure you, Pete Myers did not vote in a way that represents the constituents of his district. Half of us have never even seen you, and my parents live on the same road as you. Sheldon and Thompson also did not vote for the people. They voted for themselves, just like they always do. Contrary to what Mr. Thompson here believes, I'm not uneducated. I have an associate's, a bachelor's, and a master's degree in nursing. I serve the elderly population here in Walton County, Georgia. It's a demographic that you guys seem all too happy to tax out of their homes. Homes that they've worked for their entire lives. Even when they're paid off, they don't really own it, do they? People are having to decide what to skip out on: food, medications, doctor's visits? I'm a single mom. I have one income. I think I do fairly well for myself, and yet every year, the budget gets a little bit tighter at my house. Taxes go up, my escrow analysis rolls in, and the mortgage payment goes up every year. You're making it impossible for people on a fixed income and single parents with one income to survive. You were elected to represent the people. Where the people look around you. We have protested, we've petitioned, and we've urged you to stop and just listen, to do the one thing that you're sitting in those seats to do. I emailed every commissioner more than once. I got a couple of responses from Chairman Thompson, simply stating no. The glaring arrogance of not even pretending to care or hear anyone out. I also got a response from Pete Myers. He responded, "Please send me your address. I'll run your new estimated taxes so you can see the truth." If you remember, Pete, in my response, I told you, "You're missing the point. It doesn't matter if it's $2 or $200. I see the truth every day in black and white in my mailbox, the bills." Another truth arrived just last week from you guys. And let's just say that $200, I wish that's where that increase had stopped. And the fun little tale about everybody getting an offset for school, mine went up. Everything went up. The taxes on my home have gone up over $2,000 in the past three years alone. So you can sit up here in these chairs and say that you can't control whatever different variables, but the fact of the matter is that in those chairs, it's your job to care. You are supposed to consider that and do what's in the best interest of the people. And I can tell you this, you haven't been doing that. Last thing I have to say, what's done in darkness always comes to light.
Please, please. Mathiaa Parson, please come forward. This is a business meeting. Please control yourself. Mathiaa Parson. Is Mathiaa Parson here? All right, that's it. That's all that's, everybody send up. Okay, thank everyone for their comments. There's no more announcements to make, and we do not have need for executive session. So I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Need a second? I second the motion to adjourn. And this is no question and answer session. You made your statements. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Did we get a vote to adjourn? Lee said yes, I think. Did he say yes? Okay, I didn't hear.